Becky today. Off our work session with the. If you guys would speak into the microphone, then our people on. You're all going to pull it off and hold it.
Hey, can you hear me hopefully? It's on right? Okay, so hello, thanks for having me today. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Amy Wyland. I'm the Director of Summit County Public Health. It's been several years since we've come to present to your council. And we thought you've all turned over, I think, for the most part, since we were here last. And we thought it was super important to come talk to you about the nicotine work that we are doing, that we're all doing countywide as a collective effort since we passed some of the policies that we're going to talk about today. So what we all, I'm, I'm here with my colleague Becky and then some of, some members from our Youth Empowerment Society of Summit, who are really passionate about this work, to share their stories of what they're continuing to experience with their friends, people they care about. Well, we already know, we know that nicotine is still the number one cause of preventable deaths in the United States. Over 480,000 people die every year. We know that nicotine is highly addictive, as addictive as cocaine or heroin, possibly more so, and definitely more difficult to quit. We know that the use of nicotine products in any form by youth especially is unsafe. Use during childhood and adolescence causes significant health issues, including an increase in the number of and severity of respiratory illnesses, decreased physical fitness, and effects on lung growth and function. But we also know that it causes long lasting changes in brain development, which in turn have negative implications for learning, memory, attention, behavior problems, and future addiction. And most importantly, this is when addiction takes hold of the youth brain because it's underdeveloped. It often causes lasting. Addiction often lasting through adulthood. Among adults who have ever smoked a daily cigarette, 87% of those adults tried cigarettes for the first time before age 18, 95% of them before age 21. So this population is very vulnerable for lifelong addiction of this deadly product. We also know that the trifecta policies that were passed here in Summit County in 2019, because of the high rates of use that we had among our youth, which Becky will talk to you about if you do not recall that. The, the trifecta of policies that we passed, which included raising the age to 21, requiring licensing for any retail, retailer that sells these products, as well as increasing the price based on the tax and the ballot initiative that passed in 2019. We know in the research that these trifecta of policies decrease initiation and decrease use of these deadly substances, especially among youth. What are the implication? What you will hear tonight is stories from our youth and what they're still seeing in our community. And you'll also hear Becky talk about what the funding has gone for so far that you have provided public health to be good stewards of in the teen collection tax revenue. What will the implications continue to be for Summit County based on the information you will hear tonight? Though we are seeing tobacco use decrease among youth nationally and fortunately here in Summit County as well, as you will see soon, multiple factors continue to influence the use and, use and initiation among youth. The industry's efforts to target youth continues to put our youth at risk and threaten the progress that we've already made. Tab, the tobacco industry continues to reinvent itself, to get new generations hooked on this, on their products, including more diverse flavored products, which are most popular among our young users of the products. Pouches now are becoming very popular. Packaging is also very colorful and attractive to youth. And then their advertising on platforms like social media, video, video games, which is called Adver Gaming, if you didn't know that term, and virtual reality platforms where there is under and/or absent regulations. It is for these reasons, despite the decreases that we have, have, that we must remain vigilant and have sustained public health monitoring, as well as implementation of these evidence-based programs, programs and initiatives, and as well as the medium, media campaigns that Becky will talk about. So we further reduce the potential use in all the generations to come, not just what we're currently seeing the data on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Becky to talk to you about all the successes we've had with the funding that you continue to support us with. So thank you for that.
So just wanted, like I said, my name is Becky Pelter. I'm the Health Promotion and Prevention Specialist for Summit County Youth and Family Services. I manage the nicotine tax funding and then also the STEP grant, which is the state Colorado nicotine tax grant that we receive. Um, next slide please. So just to give a little brief overview of just the history, if you weren't around when they got, when the tax passed. Back in 2017, 40.6% of Summit High School students reported using an electronic vapor product in the past 30 days. And this was higher than the region and the state. And so when that information came about and youth were really talking about how prevalent it was in the schools, we really wanted to have this trifecta policies and do something about that. Next slide please. So that's where harnessing the opportunity of those three policies came into play that Amy talked about. So the price increase is the policy with the strongest impact on reducing tobacco product use across all ages. The tobacco retail license piece of that just provides that infrastructure for counties, cities and towns to monitor sales and creates a system of accountability. And then the legal sales age increase, a report by the National Academy of Sciences projected the Tobacco 21 legislation, there'd be a 25% drop in smoking initiation among the high school students. And so that's kind of why we put those three policies together and we really wanted all municipalities to pass those at once. And so go ahead to the next slide. And that's what we did. So we increased the sales tax on cigarettes to $4 a pack. We had a 40% increase on sales tax for all nicotine and tobacco products with a 10% increase each year for the next four years. So we're currently on an 80% tax on all nicotine products and we stay at 80% forever. We increased the purchase age to 21. We were, we did this prior to the state increasing the age. They didn't do that until 2021. We did this in 2019. And then they had the local tobacco retail license required. What's really amazing about Summit County is we are the most covered county in tobacco control policies in the entire state. So good job, everybody. Thank you for that. And that includes unincorporated and then all four jurisdictions. Not including Keystone, obviously, but they did pass a local retail license earlier this year. So they are on board, which is awesome. Next slide. So I just wanted, I know this is a lot of words and you're not going to read it, but I just wanted to put this in here. The ballot language for Summit County, you've heard Measure 1A, and really the bolded pieces really talks about reducing teen vaping, improving the health of citizens and public health consequences that stem from use of cigarettes, tobacco products, nicotine products, providing addiction prevention intervention programs, referral services, local law enforcement of laws, rules, regulations, et cetera, improving the availability of affordable public healthcare services, et cetera. So these primary activities were earmarked in the ballot language. And we know that there's still a need for prevention programming because we have lots of young people that are growing up in our community. And like Amy talked about, big tobacco is ever-changing and consistently, constantly changing. Really want to make sure that we're doing as much prevention work as we can. Next slide. So this again, so this is all the programs that are funded by Part One and you can refer to the orange top of your sheet. That's the whole, with the survey data and all that. So we have the Summit Tobacco Coalition and that's basically, we have representation from every jurisdiction on the coalition. We have representation from all the organizations who receive tax money. We have a lot of community partners. We have youth on the coalition. And really that they're the group of people who help with the strategic plan, who help with implementing and really decide where that money is going. We have that five-year strategic plan, which is your other sheet that I gave you, which outlines all the different strategies and goals that we have over the next five years of where that money is going. You can take a look at that. If you have questions, feel free to reach out to me. And then there's a ton of programs that we fund, which is really amazing. So I'm just going to briefly go through them a little bit and then you can refer to your sheet for more information and stats. And we have vape take back. Vapes are hazardous waste and there's nowhere in the state of Colorado that can take vapes. So we have a big vape take back program within Summit County. And then we contract with a company to ship them out of state. We have three mass media campaigns that have been really successful. Vapingsex.org, that's for youth. IchooseMyFuture.org, which is an opioid campaign for youth in the community. And then Realsummit.org is our adult campaign. Those campaigns are really, they've been really successful because we use local youth in the community who tell their stories about either their experiences with nicotine or how to live a healthier lifestyle. We create videos and then we literally push them out on every social media platform that they have. So when they're scrolling through Snapchat, they're seeing their friend or their peer talking about vaping or how to live a healthier lifestyle. All the campaigns are very similar to that, just either youth focused or adult focused. And I choose my future is opioid focused. We have peer mentoring within the schools. We have multiple community trainings that we do. And we provide grants for licensures and certifications to provide like counseling for cessation. We do tobacco retailer compliance and education. That's within Youth and Family Services. And then the funding funds Building Hope, the Hype Event. So that's pro-social free activities for youth ages 12 to 18. Nicotine cessation scholarships through Building Hope. So individuals receive 12 individual counseling sessions. The school district receives funding for nurse and social worker hours. And some of that goes to Catch My Breath, which is an anti-vaping curriculum. And then Teen Interviewing, which is motivational interviewing, trying to get to the root cause of why they're using substances. And then the Summit Community Care Clinic, so health navigation, nicotine replacement therapy, electronic medical records, interpretations, providers. So like I said, there's a lot that we're funding, which is really wonderful. And we've done a lot of work. So you can take a look at all of that. Next slide please. So this is like the really awesome that we've seen since all the policies were passed in 2019. This is the county health rankings and this is for Summit County adults. We can see that smoking use in 2019 was at 15%. And we've had a steady decline over the past few years and we're at 12% now. Next slide. This is the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. So they do this survey every two years in the middle school and the high school. This, were used in electronic vapor product in the past 30 days. As I mentioned in the beginning, we were so much higher than the state and the region in 2017 at 40.6%. The really amazing thing is since we passed all these policies, we've seen a steady decline in use across the middle school or the high school and the region and state, which is great. So we're down to 7.5% of Summit High School students using vapor products. And that is, a majority of our students are not using nicotine, which is really wonderful. And it shows that all of the programs that we're doing and all of the education cessation, treatment, prevention is, is helping, which is really amazing. And just for reference, the region 12 is Summit County, Eagle County, Grand, Pitten and Jackson County. So this is just perspective. This is youth that think people who use vapes every day have a moderate or great risk of harm. It's just interesting, in 2017, we were really low, 47%. And we've increased that now. We're at 87.3%. And we're a little bit higher than the state and region, which is really wonderful. All the education's working. And then this other slide here is just really interesting. The one on the left says the percentage of students who feel it'd be sort of easy or very easy to get an electronic vapor product if they wanted is almost 50% with Summit High School students. That's pretty high. The more sticky green one is on the right. Among those underage students who try to buy tobacco or vaping products in a store, the percentage who are not refused because of age is 81%. So we can know that a lot of times youth are getting them straight from the retailer, which is why we want to do compliance checks, things like that, along with a lot of other ways that they're getting them. But we just, we really appreciate all the support that you guys have all given us for the tax programming, the funding. And we've done, done a lot of wonderful work and there's still work to do. But we really appreciate everything that you all have done and supported. And we have a couple of youth who would just like to tell a couple of stories that they have.
Hello, I'm James Rivera. I'm a senior at the high school and here to talk about vaping. Ever since I was a freshman, its use has been constant in the schools. You, you go to the bathroom, you walk in, you're just hit with this cloud of cotton candy and all these fruity smells. You look, you look, you look around the classroom and you see several students' eyes just, just beet red, just staring off into space, not paying attention to the lesson. And they're practically mannequins for all that they do and for like group projects and such. This isn't even just limited to, these effects aren't limited to when they're high either. They're throughout the entire time that they're using. So like, when a, when a youth, when anybody, but especially when a youth uses nicotine, the dopamine receptors in the brain are deafened and it requires more and more of the chemical to make them happy. This causes similar symptoms to ADHD, specifically having serious difficulty concentrating and remembering. And yeah, I'm sure I don't need to tell you why having those problems is bad in a school environment. But yeah. Uh, the nicotine tax goes towards several different prevention and mitigation, and mitigation programs. I myself have given several talks at elementaries and middle schools throughout the county through the Catch My Breath program, which was funded by the nicotine tax. These programs take, and these programs all take advantage of a fact that we've known about addiction since the start of its study. Its greatest weakness is community. When given a choice between a substance or their friends, between a hit of their, of whatever and a fun event, the student or the youth will choose the friends and events almost every time. Really, if we want our youth to be happy and healthy and successful, we need to continue with these programs. Thank you for your continued support of the nicotine tax and the prevent, and the preventative measures put in place by it.
Can you guys hear me okay? Hi, my name is Ureli. I am a senior in the Summit High School. And I want to talk about how nicotine has the ability to destroy relationships, specifically in between youth. I've seen this, I've seen nicotine's ability to destroy relationships twice before in my life. And while that sounds dramatic, it's the truth. And it's really hard to know what to say to someone, especially when you're close to them, when you find out that they're using an addictive substance or just to watch them destroy themselves without knowing why. The first time I saw it happen, I was with a family member. He would, he and I were really close and I looked up to him and I was confused on why he suddenly became more agitated, more aggressive and more angry. I wasn't sure why until I heard a commotion outside one day. I thought it was just another one of his tantrums. But then it turned out that he had been caught using his vape. And I was confused on why he was angry about it. His parents were confronting him about, about his use. And it made me realize that there was a connection between his behavior and the effects of the vape. His addiction was something that he cared a lot more about than he did with his own family. And because of this, he and I don't really talk anymore. I saw this situation happen again with a friend and she and I were really close. I saw her as a sister even. She told me one day that she decided to start vaping. I chose to ignore it because it was her life. Maybe if I said something to her, she would have stopped. Or if I told her the actual effects of it, she wouldn't have continued. I watched as she began ended on it and started making, and it started making more appearances over FaceTimes. She would leave class or hangouts just to go hit the vape in the bathroom. She struggled in class and constantly seemed to have a hard time focusing on our conversations. She became more easily annoyed with our whole friend group until at one point, we all just to stop, decided to stop hanging out with her because it was clear to us that she cared a lot more on when she could get her next hit. It's hard to be able to notice what to say to someone. And that's why I feel that these programs are important because it could teach someone the true nature of vaping. One thing that I often heard my family member and my old friend say was that it was better than smoking. But in reality, they became a lot more likely to start smoking, fifteen times more likely than the average teenager. Knowing this information, if I had known it at the time, I probably wouldn't have said a lot more to prevent their, to prevent their use of the vape. And I want to take a moment to thank you guys for using the tax funding for this because these programs can really help from preventing other people watching their loved ones slowly lose themselves with nicotine.
Hi, my name is Ivory. I'm 16 years old and this is my story. Last year during my second semester, I faced a difficult situation when my 12-year-old sister was heavily influenced by her friends to start vaping. I knew I had to tell my mom, but hesitated because of the fear it would worry her. Unfortunately, the issue worsened over time and by the end of the school year, my sister and her friends were suspended for consuming marijuana and infused with chocolate at school. This event was a turning point for our family. My mom realized she couldn't handle the situation on our, that we couldn't handle the situation on our own. The clinic suggested therapy as part of a solution, along with Building Hope. Through this program, my sister received free therapy and learned healthier coping mechanisms. The program also helped us as a family understand the importance of addressing these issues early, earlier on. Now she attends the Peak School where she receives more structured support and discipline. I'm happy to say that she has made progress in letting go of her addiction. Vaping, her addiction in vaping nicotine. This experience opened to, opened my eyes to see how quickly young kids, even as 12, are likely to try different substances. This can lead teens to develop dangerous habits. It also made me more aware of what was happening in my own high school environment. When one member, sorry. And last year I noticed that the, that nicotine use was becoming more accepting among my friends. And at this point, I can say all of us have tried it once, but we know it wasn't the right choice. Poor school performance, exposure to drugs and reckless behavior. I named those three because I noticed my own sister having or developing those quality traits. She started skipping classes before and became more aggressive. My mom noticed. She paid less attention to her appearance and she used to love presenting her best self. This made me realize how fortunate I was to have, to have a support system and wanted to share it with my friends. I've encouraged them to look into these resources and we've even attended some of the pre-movie events funded by the tax at the end of each month. By sharing my sister's journey and my own reflections, I hope to highlight the importance of early intervention and accessible support for youth dealing with addiction. That is why I'm thanking you for programs like Building Hope scholarships. They make a real difference and I believe they're critical in helping students like my sister and me make better choices.
So thank you again. I really appreciate your time and just thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for speaking up and thank you. Thanks for sharing your stories with us. Up next, we have the 2025 budget discussion. Mary Kay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to review the proposed water and sewer 2025 budgets. These are, there are four funds. The water and sewer operating funds and then the water and sewer plant investment funds. And these are enterprise funds, so they operate like a business. The fees need to cover the expenses. So for 2025, the last rate study that was done was five years ago in 2019. And that rate study for the water fund, the operating fund, supported a 2% increase in the volume charge. So that's what we've built into the budget. We are doing a rate study in 2425, so right now. And we are waiting for that rate study result to determine the funding for the next five years. Some other revenues that we have in, in the water operating fund are interest of 56 million. And we will be paying back the general fund sound system loan from 2020 in 2024. So that'll be done. The expenditures are behind 24 budget by 5% or about 40,000. And water operating expenditures include water plant expenditures, treatment. There's a material decrease in chemical costs of about 35,000. Distribution costs are anticipated to increase nominally, about $1,100. Source maintenance, which is costs associated with the operation and maintenance of the old Dillon Reservoir and Straight Creek, Lasky Gulch and Clinton Reservoir and the leases with Rudy and Green Mountain Reservoir. That's expected to decrease about 35,000. And we are moving 70% of the old Dillon Reservoir assessment to capital. And we're also moving the leased water contracts to capital. There's also staff training, general operations, which is just what it, what it says, general operations of the water operating fund. And that's expected to increase approximately 30,000 due to salary increases and liability insurance increases. And we do not have a transfer out budgeted in 25 at this time. Does anyone have any questions about the water operating fund proposed 25 budget? So move on to the water plant investment fund. This, the water capital fee pays for water capital projects and debt service. And we are not going to be, we are not increasing the capital fee through 25 and we are going to be evaluating that when we receive the 2425 rate study to see what we're going to do there. Other revenues in this fund are for tap fees for new developments and any changes in uses and remodels and interest. So total revenues for the water plant investment fund, the capital fund, are anticipated to be approximately 2.2 million. And that's, the major increase is due to a $900,000 increase for the Denver Water CRCA agreement and $700,000 increase for County Road 51 tap fees. So that's good story. And Scott has more details on that if you, if you needed more.
That's the second of those, of the, that's the second of two $900,000 payments. So that will be the last one?
Correct. Yeah, we received a letter from Denver Water stating that they're open to the signers of the CRCA to requesting those funds. So before the end of the year, I'm going to do that. And correct, it is the second half, which is specifically earmarked for capacity improvements at the water plant.
And that 700,000. And that seven hundred thousand we're paying from the five A fund, is that what we negotiated?
Yes.
Thanks.
And expenditures for the Water Plant Investment Fund are about two point one million. And the material items in 25 are one hundred thousand for maintenance and repairs for the existing one and a half million gallon tank and rehabilitation of the old tank and yard piping of one point one two five million. And then the engineering for water plant expansion of three hundred and fifty K. Those are the material expense items. There's obviously a lot of other line items there, but does anyone have any questions about the Water Plant Investment Fund proposed 25 budget? Okay, moving on to the Sewer Operating Fund. Charge is divided between the operating fund and plant investment fund, just like the water. And breakdown is ninety-six percent operating, four percent capital. And we will not be increasing in usage fee in 25 pending the 2425 rate study again. Revenues are projected to be one point oh three million. And expenditures are budgeted to be one point oh two million, up ten, ten percent, ninety-four thousand over the 24 budget. And the major categories and expenditures are treatment. And that's a four percent increase plus the new projects coming online in 25. We also have collection maintenance, which is down actually nine point seven three percent or fifty-five hundred due to a decrease in TV and cleaning. Scott knows more about that than I do. Lift station costs are pretty much flat, trainings flat. General operations are up about thirty-six thousand for some for pay raises and insurance increases. Does anyone have any questions about the Sewer Operating Fund?
Scott, will you tell us what TV is? TV?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is it a is it a five thousand dollar television?
So every year, so the reason why there's a decrease is that we changed our procedure for testing our collection system. So every year, what we used to do is you, a rule of thumb is always to test a third of your system every year. You not only test it, but you also TV and clean. So TV is that you send a camera, you have a little ROV that goes down the sewer pipe. And you first you camera it and you see what the condition of the pipe is. Do you have any obstructions, any pipe misalignment, so on and so forth? And then what is that you have some buildup inside the sewer main? And so then you would have it cleaned. So now we don't, we've changed our procedure because there's a new method, which is acoustic sonic testing. And so what they do is they they get into manholes and they send sound waves down the pipe. And they're able to see based on the returning sound waves whether there's some kind of an obstruction and exactly where that obstruction is. So they analyze the, so instead of doing the third of the system, analyze our entire system annually. And then we get a report on areas that need to be double checked with the ROV, the TV and then cleaning. So that's our new new procedure for doing that. Super exciting. And the videos are just fascinating.
That's a huge one.
Literally, I have I have hundreds and hundreds of hours.
And so finally, the fourth fund, the Sewer Plant Investment Fund. So revenue, the revenue source is about fourteen percent of the monthly charge. And taps are accounted for in this fund. And we normally budget for two minor tap fees a year. But this this year, we were budgeting for a significant tap fee increase of four hundred and sixty-three thousand. And that is for the County Road Fifty-One project. And then we are ending the transfer in from the general fund in 24 for the Small Business Loan Grant Program. So expenditures are budgeted at three hundred and forty-two thousand. And mostly these are ongoing expenditures, like miscellaneous small equipment, the SCADA server, which is another thing that Scott is a complete expert on, manhole and sewer line rehab projects. And then repair of the South Sewer Outfall Line, two hundred thousand, that was moved to 25. And then we are, you know, we're doing the rate study. So that's water sewer rate study for 2425. And that's done every five years. It's in the the five-year plan. And we'll see what that is, what, you know, rate increases are recommended from that. Does anyone have any questions about the Sewer Plant Investment Fund?
Where is the South Sewer Outfall Line?
So you have a North Sewer Outfall and a South Sewer Outfall. One is on the north side of Highway Six and one is on the south side of Highway Six. And really what they are is they're just the main transition trunk that everything from our system up here is either collected in the north or in the south. They go down and then down on an enemy, they reconnect and then they go to our where they're before they go into the what's called the East Bank Interceptor, which is a part of the JSA system. But there it's just two separate main trunk lines that travel through town.
Okay, any further things or comments about the Water and Sewer Operating or Plant Investment Funds proposed for proposed budget for 25? These are balanced budgets. We have reserves of three months of expenses and.
We've talked a lot about expansion at the JSA. And I didn't really see any sort of because we're not increasing sewer fees. Is there, would it be sort of behoove us to start thinking about that?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Building up some cash to participate in that?
So we're going to address that as a part of the five-year rate study that we do. The at one time, we were talking quite a bit more seriously in the JSA meetings about a possible third train expansion, increasing from four MGD to six MGD. The JSA has somewhat backed away from that. And the main reason why is that we we took a look at what the per capita volume we thought was reasonable for the for an EQR. And we lowered that from three fifty to three fifteen. And so that really gave a lot of the other stakeholders and entities that are part of the JSA kind of the breathing room that they were looking for. So they've kind of backed away from that. Which was a bit of a disappointment to me because I was actually looking forward to a plant expansion. We're going to need it at some point because it's keep in mind that the JSA is not just it's Dylan, it's Silverthorn. But there's also a lot of other Dillon Valley Wilderness, Mesa Cortina. There's a lot of stakeholders that we all send our affluent down to the JSA. And so I saw the plant expansion as a real opportunity for us to purchase some additional EQR's quite a bit for future growth. But now they've kind of backed away from that. And so right now, we're in the midst of kind of analyzing where are we at with what we have currently? What are what is what are potential projects? Do we think that's going to consume EQR's and at what rate? And at what point are we going to need additional for the future? And so that's kind of all part of the the rate study and some different things that are going on, of course, here in the town. So more more to be talked about on that as as we kind of more move forward in the future. The other possibility that I've thought of is that there's quite a bit of additional volume not in the, so we put all of our affluent into the East Bank. So similar to the North Sewer Outfall, South Sewer, Silverthorn has a East Bank, West Bank. And those are the main trunk lines that travel on both sides of the river and then meet down at the plant. Right now, the East Bank Interceptor, which we put our affluent into, is pretty full. The West Bank actually has a little more capacity. And so one of the questions that we've we're kind of still still discussing with Silverthorn, the town of Silverthorn relates to the Stevens Way Little Beaver Realignment Project that we've talked about. And is there the possibility that as part of that project, we could throw a sewer main in there and possibly sense buy some additional EQR's on the West Bank? And maybe maybe send our flows, maybe lessen the flows that we have in the East Bank and put them in the West Bank. So that's all, you know, the design, that's kind of in Silverthorn's control in terms of the Stevens Way project. We've talked to him about it. So more to come on that. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments on water and sewer? So we'll move on to special revenue highlights. So the town of Dillon has four special revenue funds. And these funds are for a specific purpose, meaning the revenues collected for these funds need to be used for that purpose. So the first one we'll go through is the Parking Fund. And that is was established to take in payments for developments that did not provide adequate parking during commercial development. And it now includes amphitheater reservations parking. And we are anticipating approximately seventy K in twenty twenty-four with no projects. And eighty percent of this revenue is coming from amp parking reservations, which is a positive story. We're going to be ending ending the ending balance in 25 of three hundred and three thousand. And this fund has to be used for parking related purposes only. Any questions about that?
I have a question. Where do we account for like the expenditures for the parking enforcement?
We actually, they take, we take fifty percent of their revenue take. So that's how they, is that what your question is?
Yeah.
Yeah, like they.
Interstate parking.
Yeah, so they 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 give us fifty percent of their take. So that's what our revenues are.
Right off the top.
Yeah. Any other questions on parking?
It's like that's our net?
Yes.
Okay.
Why do you see a decrease in two thousand twenty-five over two thousand twenty-four numbers?
We're just budgeting conservatively. It's, we could budget higher, but it's revenue and.
Does it include the amphitheater parking?
It does. I mean, we could we could ratchet that budget up a bit, certainly. It seems to be the trend that I've seen is pulling these budgets together that we've remained flat to budget in in funds like this, just to be conservative. But we could, we could veer away from that. I prefer to be conservative on the revenue side. Any other questions about parking? Okay, we'll move on to Conservation Trust. And this is from the lottery proceeds. And so we receive our share of the state lottery proceeds based on population. We don't have any projects anticipated. We will have an ending balance at the end of 25 of one hundred and twenty-six thousand. And we are to use that those funds for parks and open space as required by state statute. Does anyone?
For for trying to budget flat or like not expect great gains or whatever, since we're expecting it to be a little bit lower than the budget, should we be looking at what we're actually expecting to get this year versus what we were budgeting to get?
Yeah, it's where the estimate for twenty-four comes in to project for where we think the, you know, the amphitheater is going to end up in terms of reservations. So the seventy, we could be flat to.
All right, for the for the conservation, were we on the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about.
I was just, I, you know, I understand what you were saying with it.
Yeah.
It's over, you'd rather, you know, stick to the budget and be pleasantly surprised. But when it's under, should we be adjusting down?
I mean, that's that's up to you guys. I I prefer, I mean, this is how Carrie has budgeted. So I was kind of going in line with how she has approached this. And, you know, this is relatively flat, you know, fourteen K, fifteen K. You know, I think if it gets more material than that and we see a consistent trend, then we can start to think about adjusting our budget. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. Any further questions on Conservation Trust? Okay, so moving on to Housing Five A. And that was established, that was voter approved. And the one, the point one two five percent goes in perpetuity. And the point six percent apparently sunsets in twenty forty-five. I'd need to double check that date, but that was the date that I was told. So we are, we are anticipating collections of one point one seven million, which is flat to twenty-three. And any expenditures in the five A fund, we have to use for workforce housing only. And current for the twenty-five budget, we have an admin fee for the Summit County Housing Authority to administer their programs. And then we have a Summit County Housing Authority service fee or services provided to the town and other municipalities for deed restriction compliance and other programs. And then we have a Housing Helps line item, which is to pay into any county programs for deed restrictions and to, you know, they're they're a central authority. So, you know, they have programs for the entire county, so we can plug into that and contribute to those programs. So it seems logical to do something along those lines. So the cash available that we're going to have at the end of twenty-five is approximately six hundred and ninety-two thousand. Any questions about Housing Five A?
We should probably have a a more robust sort of work session on sort of our strategies to use the five A and sort of what our goals are and how we want to achieve those things and how to use that money every year.
We do also have in twenty-five roundabout design and roundabout build. So those are, you know, for the Fifty-One Project. And then we also have townhouse design for three hundred K, the the current employee housing that we have right by the water plant to design new workforce housing up there and possibly increase the number of units. So there are some things that we are proposing here. And it seems to be in line with what we we have been talking about with the County Road One Project.
Yeah. I'm not saying this doesn't represent what we've talked about. I just think strategy going forward, it might help direct some of these decisions.
Absolutely. Any further questions on five A? And finally, the final special revenue fund is the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. So we collect revenues for lot sales. We have capital fee and we take gravesite deposits and we also earn interest. And the gravesites, gravesite deposits are collected to ensure that a grave marker is placed within one year. And then we return those deposits. We also have general maintenance and opening and closure of grades is actually handled through the general fund. That's been historically done. We don't have any projects for the cemetery fund planned for twenty-five. We will have cash available to spend of seventy-four K for capital projects and nineteen K for any other purposes. And I know we are going to be looking at some fees for the cemetery. We're going to be reevaluating those, especially for winter burials and things of that nature. It tends to be more labor intensive and so I know that's going to be, we're going to be taking a look at that very soon. Any questions on cemetery perpetual care?
Do you know approximately how full the cemetery is and when the next, when we're anticipating to have to do an expansion?
I think that it's approximately fifty percent. It's a bit confusing because everyone, you look at the map, everything's kind of all over the place. But approximately fifty percent full right now. And of course, we have the cemetery master plan, which contemplates the new area of the cemetery, kind of on the what would be the north side of the cemetery road. So we have a plan for for future expansion. And you'll see in the capital budget, there are some projects for the cemetery, the road, realignment, the parking lot. That kind of stuff is, that's in the capital plan.
Not here.
Not, yeah, not here.
Yeah.
In the in the regular capital fund for the town.
Concludes the Enterprise Special Revenue Fund proposed budget presentation. There are no further comments or questions. Happy to answer anything further.
Thank you, Mary Kay.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Town Council Training by Town Attorney Jeff Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to distribute some handouts to the council.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to distribute some handouts to the council here. What I'm giving you is a copy of my PowerPoint presentation for this evening. You'll see that my PowerPoints are quite detailed and the, that's by design. Listen to my presentation tonight and then throw this in a file someplace and hang on to it. It will provide some good, you know, orientation on some substantive areas of the law that we have toward the end. I'm, what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to go through some general sort of political science stuff, municipal government in Colorado. Some roles and responsibilities for council administration and the attorney. One thing I, we've learned is oftentimes the newly elected officials, and this isn't any kind of knock on elected officials, have no idea what the city attorney does, what my job, how I advise the client, what my job, what my, our responsibilities are, how we interact with the council. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time on that. I'm going to recommend that this council direct us to develop rules of procedure for you guys. And what I've handed out are the rules of procedure for the town of Woodland Park. And when I get to the rules of procedure, I'll, we'll walk through those briefly. And then I'll ask you to just take, take those home and take a look at them. So I'm so pleased to be doing this. Like anytime, we, we always do these kind of trainings after an election with a council. Usually the, there's two things that happen. We do council trainings and then we revise and update the council rules of procedure. So the rules of procedure are adopted by each new council. They are the council's rules. So without further ado, I'll dive in here. Next slide, please. Okay, there's two main types of municipal governments in Colorado, statutory municipalities and home rule municipalities. Statutory municipalities, as you would imagine, derive their powers from the statutes. They have only the powers that the statutes grant and necessary authority to execute the granted powers. Most statutory municipalities in Colorado are towns under the population of two thousand. But men, some towns have gone home rule like Dylan has. Home rule municipalities, in contrast to statutory municipalities, have plenary legislative authority. They do not need to find their authority in a statute. They have all authorities commonly possessed by government, whether or not they're expressly granted or not, subject only to the limitations of the federal constitution and the limitations that Colorado courts place on home rule cities in certain areas. In the areas where the courts have limited our authority, we often still have the authority to legislate. But if our ordinances conflict with the state statute, the statute prevails. In matters of local and municipal concern, however, areas like elections and sales tax. If we have a local ordinance that conflicts with the state statute, our local ordinance supersedes the state law, which is really quite remarkable. It's a very aggressive form of home rule that we have in this state. Next slide, please. So home rule municipalities like Dylan, as I say, are usually larger cities. The, the, the home rule begins with the people adopting a charter and creating a charter commission, developing a charter. Charter is adopted by the voters. All this has happened in Dylan already. The limitation, as a, as I said, you have plenary authority and the limitations are those found in the constitution and in federal law. Next slide, please. Okay, roles and responsibilities. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, you're, you've all learned in grade school about the separation of powers between executive, legislative and judiciary. Well, we have the same thing at the municipal government level. You guys are the legislative branch. Nathan is the town manager. He's the, the role served by the executive branch. His job is to administer the policy decisions of the council. And we'll get into some of that in more detail. And then the judicial branch at the municipal level is the municipal court. The next slide, please. Okay, first, roles and responsibilities of the council. Obviously, there are more than I'm going to list here. Okay, these are some examples. First, represent your constituents in making policy decisions for the town. The policy decision part is very important. That distinguishes the, what Nathan and his staff do, which is administration. You do not do administration. You do policy development. And then we, the attorney and the manager and the judge, we all carry out the policy you make. Your responsibility, you also have a responsibility to create a forum for public input. In our form of government, the way the public lets the government, one of the ways, the public gets to let the government know what they think is show up at our meetings. And that's the whole basis behind the open meetings law. So they know when to do that and so on and so forth. Public bodies have a lot of discretion about how they control that function, you know, public comment, how long, who speaks and so on and so forth. We can get into that more later on. The general responsibility for the council is to responsibly, credibly and in a timely manner, perform the council's public trust responsibilities. And it's easy to read right past that, but there's a lot in there. Responsibly, incredibly, it's incumbent upon the body to maintain the credibility of the body with the public. So, you know, that's a big part of the responsibility of a council. And I know you've had lots of exciting meetings here. And one of the, one of the ways that getting that under control starts is you, we all exhibit by our behavior, the behavior we expect from the audience and from ourselves. We'll talk more about that in the rules. Perform this, the next one sounds a little self-serving, but there it is. Perform council's functions in a legal manner, consistent with the direction from the attorney, including, especially as to quasi judicial matters, which again, we'll, I'll talk about downstream. Periodically review the performance of myself, our firm, Nathan and the town judge. Bring, because of the non-interference rule, which is the last item on this slide. You, this, this non-interference rule is the essence of the council manager form of government. This one is more, there's a state law that makes it illegal to, to violate the no interference rule. The version of the no interference rule in your charter is more liberal than the state law. If I remember the state law correctly, it says, you shall only communicate with staff through the manager, full stop. This says, you, you can discuss stuff with matters relating to town operations with employees and officers of town, including the manager. You shall not be authorized to give any direct orders to town employees except by formal action. The council as a whole, the distinction between state law and how you do things here in Dylan. But the public policy behind it is the same. You set policy, Nathan and his shop administer it. And that's why it's called separation of powers. Let's see, what else do I need to tell you here? Oh, yeah, I skipped the thing about party, consistent with that, part of your job is that people are complaining about snow being plowed or trash, you know, or weeds in the alleys or whatever. Your job is representatives of your constituents is to let Nathan know about it. So he gets his staff to go out and cut the weeds and plow the snow and put the, fill the potholes and so on and so forth. That's how that's supposed to work. Next slide, please. And I have, hey, if you guys want to ask me any questions as I'm racing through all this material, don't worry. Just ask me. That's great. It's fine. Okay, for now, roles and responsibilities of Nathan and his staff. First, there's a big, long list in your charter. Some of you are probably familiar with the describe your city managers responsibilities. Not all city charters have that in them. Not all charters have, you know, forty things the manager is supposed to do. But I don't know if it's forty, but your charter has a rather lengthy list, so know that. The manager, the, as the administrator, the chief administrator of your town, the city manager's principal responsibility is to conduct day-to-day operations. Your job's to set policy, his job's to do the day-to-day operations. As I keep mentioning, the staff carries out the policy choices of the council. They all, staff also serves as Adrian does as secretariat for all of you guys. Notice up your meetings, provide you with information that you need to do your job. Provide all of the various in, in sort of administrative infrastructure to the council. And then the, a pet sort of objective of mine, and this is one that's the responsibility of legal and Nathan's shop, is we work together to make sure that everything that comes up to you guys on council is all done in terms of legal questions and any of that kind of monkey business. So that you aren't spending your time here at a council meeting arguing about whether you have the authority to do this or that. You're just arguing about what you want to do. What is the policy choice? We take care of the law ahead of time, ideally. It, it won't always work. There will be times when legal questions come up, of course. I don't like it because I'm not going to, I'll get to this a little later, but my job is not to tell your opponents the weaknesses in your legal position, which is why I'm not going to give you legal advice in an open meeting. Because when I give you legal advice, I'm going to give you all of it. Pluses, minuses, strengths and weaknesses. I'm your attorney. I'm not the public's attorney in this case. So. Yes.
And what, at what level of detail is, is our policy responsibilities?
That's your choice. You can be as detailed or it's. Like you could, your, your pronouncements in various areas require different levels of detail. If you're setting a, perhaps you think the policy for use of parks can be considerably less detailed than a policy for use of the amphitheater, for example.
So would we be overstepping our bounds by going through those as a council, those points one by one?
No.
Micromanaging?
You're not micromanaging, you're establishing a policy. If you then get into telling Nathan how to do it, you know, the minutia of how to carry out your policy, then that's the other side of the line. But, but you can be as detailed as you wish. It's your choice. It's situational. Some areas require great detail, others do not. So. Uh, let's see, where are we? Okay, so what is the town? Next slide, please. So what does the town attorney do? First, your charter provides some direct, yes, the town six one B of the charter will serve as general counsel of town, advise the council, you guys, the town manager and other town officials in matters relating to their official powers and duties, and then other duties is assigned by the council. As I see, as I said earlier, about ninety five percent of the work your town attorney does for the town is with the staff. We show up at the meetings. Lots of times we don't say much because all our work was done beforehand. You know, so we're, what we do at council meetings is worry about stuff like procedural stuff. You know, how do you make a motion for reconsideration? If the clerk needs help on stuff like that, we're, we're here to help. So I listed there, working with city staff, it's really soup to nuts. It's contracts, it's real estate acquisition, it's compliance with federal law on disabilities. It's everything you can possibly imagine and more. It's just, one of the reason city attorneys are such happy people is because we, the variety is just nuts. You don't go, it isn't like some areas of law where you go in and you write securities operating statements for four hundred and fifty dollars an hour all day long. And then you want to kill yourself because it's absolutely stultifying. So I'm a homie on this area of practice. I really like this. Next slide, please. Okay, so what, what is, what are our duties with respect to you all with council? As I keep saying, we make sure all legal questions are resolved ahead of the council meeting. We advise the council in terms of your operating legal obligations. And these are, I'm not particularly strong in land use. Nina and Eric are on that, but I'm good on all this other stuff. A lot of this so-called front office, open meetings, open records, parliamentary procedure. That's conflicts of interest, that sort of thing. We assist the council in your legislative role as well by first helping you guys have, you know, helping present you with options. You want to develop a park code to deal with how people use your parks and how you lease space in the park for a farmer's market or some other event? Well, we'll go get park ordinances from, you know, five or six other municipalities that have differences so that you can all look at them and decide which way you want to go. Maybe you want to combine one ordinance with another. That's part of our job. So you guys don't have to root around trying to figure out how Steamboat Springs regulates its parks. You know, we'll do, we can, we'll help do that. And then if somebody sues the town or threatens to sue the town, this is obviously something your attorneys help with. We go into executive session and we'll advise you on what kind of exposure the town has and what sort of options the town has in terms of responding to a lawsuit. And then if you guys decide you want to be suing somebody for something, we'll have the same kind of conversation, but from the offensive point of view, towns are not the ones suing. Unfortunately, we're the ones getting sued. So that'll probably be more likely what, what we're talking to you about. Then finally, one of the attorney's jobs, and this is part of the parcel of my recommendation later about rules of procedure, is that we try to help you all do your job better. You guys get to decide. All we do is advise. But we'll say here, you know, you want to solve this problem procedurally, here's four ways you might think about doing that. So that's part of our job. Next slide, please. Okay, how do you, how do you work with us? How do you reach out to us as council members? First thing is have procedures in place. Most municipalities do. One of the things that we always suggest to every council is send us your question in writing. Probably somebody else on the council has the same question. That, you see it all the time. You send us the question in writing, then we ordinarily will respond to the entire council with a question. That way the, everybody gets smarter all at once. That's self-serving to think that anything we would give you would make you smarter, but that's the goal. And the other thing it does is it keeps the lawyers out of the middle. Okay, we weren't born yesterday. Then we don't have one council member saying the lawyer told me this and the other one saying the lawyer told me that because the lawyer told all of you the same thing at the same time. So we don't get weaponized in the rope-a-doe, you know, it kind of keeps that under control. There, the next thing is the one hour rule. This is something that I'm going to recommend that you have in your rules of procedure. I had a council member, here's how I'll illustrate the importance of this rule. Council member in one of my cities that thought it would be really cool to use the taxing power to, to curb the, the wide dispersal of assault weapons in society. So he wanted to adopt, propose to the voters a local tax of something like fifty percent on the price of it, of a assault weapon. Well, he wanted me to go research the use of the municipal taxing power and its interface with the second amendment. And it would have been, nobody else on council gave two hoots about this, okay? So I would have spent fifteen hours at the taxpayers' expense researching some arcane question that nobody gave any, cared anything about. So the taxpayers would take it in the shorts. So the one hour rule is we will respond to any of your questions if they take an hour or less. If they take more than an hour, then two of you have to ask. That way, there's at least some, some in your interest on council before your attorneys go taking a deep dive in something. That's not your rules yet, but this is a rule I'm going to suggest. It helps keep legal costs under control. Okay, if, and as, he's kind of sick of me saying this about twelve different ways in this outline. If your question's about an upcoming council agenda item, please call us ahead of time and ask us your question. Because then we can answer fully. We can explain all the downsides, the upsides. We can put it out in a memo to everybody else on the council. You know, it's, it just works a lot better. So try to do that. The, the one time I will answer, you know, legal authority questions if I can affirm you, my client's authority in a public meeting. So somebody comes to public comment and says, you guys don't have the authority to do that. You're, your lawyer's full of garbage. You know, well, somebody will turn to me and say, is that right? Well, I'll say, no, I'm not full of garbage for starts, but also your legal authority is unquestioned. So that, we take care of the problem and everybody moves on. We don't have to say, well, we need to lay this over in order to get some more direction from our attorney. I like to keep the trains running if I can. So that's, every rule has its exceptions. And that's one where I will speak up and tell you, you're doing okay. So, uh, next slide, please. Hey, look what's first. Yeah, don't ask us for legal advice in an open meeting and, oh, yeah, don't, here's my, don't ask us to respond to somebody who comes up in public comment and, and tries to tell you what the law. Don't ask us to respond to somebody who comes up in public comment and and tries to tell you what the law is. Every one of our jurisdictions has a surprising number of retired Supreme Court justices. Living in the community and they show up at public comment to explain what the law is to you on a regular basis. I will not respond in an open meeting to that. You know, so don't ask me to is what the whole point of this one. Um, finally, a little self-serving, we got a hundred and fifty years of doing this at our firm. We deal with you guys at all kinds of other city councils all the time. We're solving a lot of the same problems. Everybody's trying to deal with what to do about mushroom facilities now. Everybody's trying to deal with social media limitations. The legislature passes these laws and we all have to race around and. And and you know, deal with it. So there's a lot of opportunity for cross fertilization and and. Not avoiding reinventing the wheel on a lot of stuff. So again, we're very respectful of the fact we look. Your lawyers are very respectful of fact, nobody elected us to nothing. Okay, we're not, we're agnostic on matters of policy, but we are here to help you develop your options. So. Uh, ask us. Council rules of procedure. Uh, yes, wait, roll back just a second. I gotta see, we don't need those stinking rules. Uh, that's apologies to treasurer of the Sierra Madre. Remember badges? We don't need those stinking badges. Well, uh, rules, I think you deem to, you do need rules. Next slide. You don't have them, you need them. Your council rules of conduct that you adopted recently are a good start. And many of the things that are addressed in those rules of conduct are things that you find in um, rules of procedure. Rules of procedure are good because they're they're uh, like, like I say here, rules prevent council meetings from being like all-star wrestling. You know, all-star wrestling, there aren't any rules except the rules they agree on. And it's the same way with city council. All-star wrestling, you know, you can jump off the ropes onto a guy's head, but you do not pull his pants down. Okay, that's a rule. Everybody plays by the rules, whether you're winning or losing, you play by the rules. Uh, so everybody adopts the rules, the rules come apply to everybody, even those who might not have voted for them. There's no opting out of the rules. There's no situational application of the. The rules are the rules. You may not like the rules, but you know what the rules are and everybody knows and everybody, everybody knows that everybody knows the rules. So. Uh, they they really do, they really do bring order out of chaos. And as I said earlier, a standard process with a newly elected council is they have to be the council's rules. So we necessarily have to revisit the rules after every election. And sometimes the rules that they, once they get, they've gone through several iterations, they get pretty good. You know, there's not a lot of new stuff, but the ritual matters. And the the going through the rules and every, all the new guys or gals familiarizing themselves with the rules is a very. Very important uh, step to take. And of course you can amend them and change them every time you update it. And you can amend them and change them anytime when they're not before you. All you have to do is agendaize that you want to make an amendment that rules concerning uh, public comment and work sessions. Okay, you don't have any rules on that. Say you just, you realize that your council rules of procedure are deficient in this or that. Well. Make an amendment, fix it. It's a, it's a really, they really serve a good function. Next slide, please. Rules bring order to proceedings. They, they, I, I won't go through this whole last, we'll, we'll, um. We'll actually get to a lot of this here. This is where I'd like you to take a look at the uh. Uh, fair, fair play, the woodland park rules of procedure that I hand to you. Um, I'm not, you'll be pleased to hear, I'm not going to head through this whole thing. But I want to highlight a few things. Turn over to page two, section three. See here, we have duties of officers. We have the presiding officer's duties. There's all kinds of detail in here about. You know, how to handle motions and so forth. Questions of order, attendance rules. Uh, let's go over to the next pick, go to page five. Uh, see that now we're in section four, meeting provisions, that's on the middle of page four. Uh, subsection E concerns voting there on page five. The first paragraph are general voting protocols. The second paragraph is what happens if you have a tie, right? You know, like, you have to have a process for that. What if you have a vacancy? So you end up having a lot of tie votes. You need a process. The next paragraph deals with conflicts. You've got conflicts language already in your charter. Uh, here's uh, here, it's usually repeated in the rules of procedure. The next paragraph is. What do you do if somebody just says, I'm not going to vote? Well, this talks about unlawful abstentions. Um, go over to the next page, page six, item F, general meeting decorum. The, this talks about common in part under Roman numeral two, people can address the council on anything. However, they shall direct their remarks to the entire city council and exercise proper respect. A person or persons disrupting the council shall be asked by the presiding officer to cease disruptive behavior. And then elsewhere in here, there's all kinds of protocols for enforcing that too. Like you tell somebody to sit down and they don't sit down. That's disrupting a lawful meeting and you could have the cops. Pull them out of here. You can't do it if they're at the podium. Because if they're at the podium, you've got a public forum created under the first amendment of the US Constitution. And if you pull them out of the, if you pull them away from the podium when you're talking, you're interfering with political speech. And you get sued under the federal civil rights act. We had problems with that because we had these first amendment auditors that would show up and. Dress in underwear with American flags on it and call all the women on the council the C word. And call black women the N word and or black people, it just the most vile, ugly stuff. And the whole purpose of this was to get the body to have the the cops remove them from the podium. And then they sue us under the federal civil rights law for hundreds of thousands of dollars for interfering with political speech. So the protocol for that, by the way, is you adjourn the meeting, see, then it's not a public forum anymore. Then it's failure to disperse and trespassing and the cops can get them out of here. Yes.
Jeff, I've got a question on that uh, real life example last Monday. I think you were on remotely. We had a pretty wild and woolly meeting where the uh.
I made some notes.
The public took over, you know, was screaming at at the council. And um, you know, it wasn't called to order, even though we hadn't agreed on uh, no public, we.
Well, the rules give you something to hold on to in a situation. You don't have any rules right now.
Yeah.
And the rules are something that everybody knows and everybody in the situation, everybody can point to. Say, look at rule eight, two says, we either take comments in in work sessions or we don't take comments. You could, you guys have to pick, decide the rule, or we don't decide public comment. This is how it is in many of my cities. Usually you don't take public comment, but upon agreement of the majority of the body present, you can take public comment. You know, or any other rule you want to do. I, I'm agnostic, like I said, but the rules give you something to point to and something to rely on. And provide a standard for everybody. Um, let me just work, go through a, a few more of these. Um, look at section five on page seven, council rules, meetings, occurrence, notice provisions. There is a description of what work sessions are supposed to do. You, this is the the location, for example, where you could describe what you do and don't do in uh, work sessions. Go over to the next page, you'll see in section six, we have a lot of. Council meeting agenda and order of business for different kinds of meetings. General meetings, work sessions you see are item B. Um, there's all sorts of detail in here that I won't go into. If you flip over to page eleven now, we're still in this section on council meetings and so forth. Item F is public comments. Um, you guys have a five-minute rule, I guess, but we need to write it down. Um, this in woodland park, it's three minutes. You guys can decide whatever you want. You can have five, you can have four. You can have three, you can have.
So we can decide that as a majority of council of how many minutes we want.
And put it in your rules.
And everybody has to follow the rules.
Yes. And but this public comment thing has really gotten to be a while now lately.
Right.
Like in Boulder, they've had like hundreds of people signing up for public comment. And they go to these council meetings and all you do is hear public comment all night. You don't get any of the people's business done. So what they've done, I believe in Boulder is they've got, you have to sign up ahead of time. They pick twenty people randomly and that's public comment. Boom.
I don't think we've had more than twenty.
Twenty, well, whatever you want to do. You take twenty, there's three minutes each, you know. That's, that's how much time they're going to spend on public comment in Boulder, but this is Dylan. You guys get to decide what you want in Dylan. The thing to remember is public comment is not legally required. Although, excuse me, yeah, I believe you have a charter provision that says you'll hear from the public, so I take that back. It's not legally required under state law or the US constitution, but. You could certainly impose that obligation on yourself under your charter, and I think actually you have. But rules are out of chaos.
Cause since I've been on council, we've always had work session, nobody gives comments. It's just us working through.
I didn't see, I'll look again.
And then pub, and then the regular meeting has always been, you know, public comment normally. Um, nobody else, you know, it's usually in control or usually in control of it, but it just hasn't been lately, so I didn't.
Well, and and when you get into the regular meeting, public, it's not public comment on everything like in these rules. No public comment on consent agenda items, no public comment on ordinances on first reading. Because you're going to have the hearing on second reading. So you don't need twenty people to come in and talk to you at first reading, when mostly what you're doing is deciding whether enough of you agree on this idea. To set it for a formal hearing on second reading. If you look at these paragraphs under the public comment rule that I was referring to. The second paragraph talks about how to decide who testifies first. Between people that sign up online and people that sign up in person and people that blah, blah, blah. There's all this way of prioritizing. Different kinds of witnesses that show up. The next paragraph says if somebody uses up their five minutes and they have more to say. You may, you do not have to, but you may permit them to come back later and finish their comments.
Jeff, would you recommend we create a rule of, you know, based on what happened Monday, that people who speak out of order. Or raise their voice inappropriately, be escorted out of the meeting?
Not when they do it first time. Cause I grew up in a little town, you know, people get all excited, people get all fired up. And people need to learn, you know, but the second or third time they can't keep their mouth, they're starting to interfere with you all getting your gut, your work done. Then, yeah, I, I think you should have a rule because if you don't have a rule, then you're, then you have the exposure of looking like you're arbitrarily. You know, picking on people because of the content of their speech. It should, the rules should be enforced evenly against everybody. Anybody who's in, you know, talking out of turn. Oh, and what I was starting to say about public comment, you got public comment on items not on the agenda. Then you take public comment on items that are on the agenda. When that item comes up, the five-minute rule applies in both cases. And so one of the things we always are having to do in our other cities is people don't get that. So they show up and start testifying during public comment about some land use item that's later on in the agenda. And we cut them off. We say, no, you're on item eight. Nobody gets irritated or annoyed because this slide. Uh, oh, I'm, I'm still talking about this, that one, maybe in a future slide, I'd point out that the rules. Benefit, if you have a divided council like here, the rules provide pre uh, predictability and equity to both sides. Everybody knows what the rules are. Um, I'm almost done with these.
Question.
Of course.
So what you're saying is we don't currently have formal rules about public comment in any of our documents.
Not that I could find.
Okay, so how do we handle like tonight's meeting, for example?
Well, you do custom and practices like you've been doing forever since I, till I got here.
But that went out the window on Monday.
Well, the, what, what I would suggest.
I want to help.
If you, well, I, what I would suggest in my, look, it's my first regular meeting here, so. Don't look at me as an authority on how you always have done stuff, but I sense there's a five-minute rule. So during public comment, people testify on stuff not on items, not on the agenda. Like one of the items that's not on the agenda is the pending referendum. So if you get people coming up here giving campaign speeches, should be five minutes. That's it.
I think some of the other municipalities have three-minute rule, Breckenridge, I mean, I think.
They all, most of them have a three-minute rule.
I would, I would like to change it to three minute.
Well, when you guys get around to adopting the rules, see, that's what. I told Nathan, we should have an executive session where we do the rules.
Okay.
Where we sit, that's what we do. And and what I'm going to, I'm getting ahead of myself now, who cares? Uh, what I'm going to recommend is that you instruct us to develop a straw man. Set of rules for you all. I've done so many of these that I know that trying to draft something like this as a group is a nightmare. The better thing is to have something to react to. Then you can say, I don't like this. I think it should be this way. I don't like this. I think it should be that way. Fine. But at least you have, you know, it'll look a lot like the woodland park rules of procedure. And let me just note at the top of page twelve. Um, you see the third, the second full paragraph, the council may more informally take public comments at a study session. When appropriate and practical. Well, that's very nebulous. You guys are going to want something more, you know, more tight than that. But there's how woodland park deals with it. Uh, reports from mayor and council members. This has been a huge problem in one of my jurisdictions because. People get all fired up during the meeting, you know, and then they get to council reports. At the end and the council reports are, yeah, and like I was telling you, you're full of crap, you know, so that, you know, you're not supposed to do. The, the council reports and the, the rule addresses that. See there, the second paragraph, don't use this portion of the meeting to make political statements, rebut, respond to or refute actions previously taken by the council. You're supposed to say, I went to a meeting of the, you know, the. The chamber of commerce and they passed a resolution to support some or other and somebody's having a car show on this date and that kind of stuff. Um, agenda preparation, uh, look at item seven B. An item for a council meeting may be placed or modified on the agenda via email request, the city manager, city clerk. By any of the following methods, top of page thirteen, a majority of voted you guys at a prior meeting. Council consensus at a prior meeting that didn't involve a vote or the mayor or any two council members. This is, you, you need a rule about how to put stuff on the agenda. And the reason, the reason you have the two-person rule for most of you is because the same reason you have the two-person rule for asking the lawyer stuff. If only one person's interested, you're going to have stuff showing up on the agenda that is way out there sometimes. Um, so that's, if this is an effort to curb that, this is woodland parks rule. You can do whatever rule you want when we get to the work, you know, you can have all kinds of different ways. I've seen, I've seen it, the mayor and a council member, I've seen the mayor and the city manager, the mayor alone. There's a million flavors and I, again, you guys can decide that. Moving out on the page to item F, public requests for presentation of pro. Some cities will have like the local baton twirlers come in, you know, and they take half an hour. Oh my God. And then after that, there's somebody else doing a half-hour presentation. You can waive the rules and agree to hear the, but have the baton twirlers take half an hour. But you should have a rule that says that like, uh. Three, each presentation has a five-minute time limit. Okay, that was the rules. You can have it be longer, you can make exceptions. These rules all have ways. It's a tool, not a rule. I mean, it is a rule, but you can create situational exceptions, but you all have to decide on it. Okay. Um, conducting public hearings, section eight at the bottom of the page. If you go over to the next page fourteen, you'll see the, basically the, the schematic for a regular hearing. Followed by the schematic for quasi judicial hearings. Um, let's see, how long am I supposed to go tonight?
Till the forty-five.
How long?
Till the forty-five.
Six oh five, sure.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five, okay, good, because after this pleasurable portion of my presentation, we're going to do some substantive law stuff. Yeah. Uh, additional items, this is where the council puts all the hard stuff that they, you know, don't, can't fit under another category. So here we have all the decorum stuff. We have, don't use your cell phone while you're in a council meeting. Go over to the next page, social media. The development in society that every attorney hates most, city attorneys. Because social media is the bane of our existence. For maintaining impartiality for quasi judicial proceedings, it's hell. Cause people are out there on their social media saying they hate the proposed new Walmart or they think this developers is slug. And then how do you establish impartiality after you've said something like that?
But how can you stop that?
Well, you stop that by following your attorney's instructions and not doing it anymore.
No, I mean, but you can't stop the public.
No, of course not, but you can stop yourself from participating while you have the public trust obligation to represent. Not your own views, but the views of all of your constituents. That's the key.
So you've had other councils that have done.
Oh, my God. Oh, it's, yeah, it's terrible. I mean, it's, we give this speech constantly. And in advising, again, I'm ahead of myself, advising on quasi judicial matters is the hardest thing we do. Because some land use decision in town has everybody up in arms. And so then we're telling all the members of the city council, hey, when somebody comes up to you on the street, do you can't talk to them. You know, well, what you can do though is you can say, listen, I can't involve and get into ex parte communications, but what do you write out like how you feel? But what do you write out like how you feel and send it to all of us? That's legal. Standing there talking to one on one is, don't do it. But they can, they can have their input. They just have to have the input to everybody on the panel at the same time. The, these rules continue. So you can look at the social media stuff. It's a lot of what you would expect. In many of these towns, there's been lots of problems with social media. You know, council members saying all kinds of snarky stuff about each other and to each other. And it's just makes life a little harder. Okay. That could see staff. Okay. That's all I have to say about those rules. Let's go back to whatever slide I was on here.
Jeff was.
Yes.
Could you give us a quick review on filing open meetings rules? So like when you talk about putting something on the agenda and you need two members, that means those two members are. Outside of this council meeting, talking about policy.
Oh, you know what? I'm going to talk about the open meetings law and I'll address that. Can, can I do it? And then if I don't, raise your hand, make sure. Okay. Let's see, where are we need for council rules of procedure? Ask. Okay, go to the next one where I'm going to add, this is where I suggest you guys direct me to draw a bell up a straw man. And we come back and have a, a, uh, work session. And, and the last thing is, is a hopeful note. I've done a bazillion of these and even divided councils can get it together on the rules. Cause they serve everybody. They provide predictability. And you may not agree on a single thing in terms of political philosophy or where the thing Dylan ought to go or anything. But often these rules pass unanimously. They don't develop unanimously. There's a lot of, you know, argument and stuff about the rules. But many times they pass unanimously at the end. Okay. Next slide, please. We're done with, uh, now we're going to get into the substantive law part of this tonight. I should have had a introductory slide here. These are just the two main forms of your legislative function, resolutions and ordinances. I'm going to go through these fast resolutions are, are of non-permanent nature. They, they like put stuff on the ballot. They, they, they recognize that it's city attorney of the week here or whatever the heck it is, you know? Any kind of occasion, less formal stuff. Next slide, please. Ordinances are of permanent nature. They announce a policy of the city. Uh, they apply broadly and permanently. There, uh, most of what, everything in your code, land use zoning, park codes, a lot of the stuff we've talked about tonight. Applications such as annexations. You have a process for adopting ordinances in, uh, section three, nine of your charter. Section three, nine of your charter tracks very closely with title thirty one, article sixteen, which is the state law. On how cities write ordinances, very similar, uh, not a lot of, not a lot of differences. Now we're going to go to the substantive areas of the law. And before we get to the open meetings law, we're going to do the open. I'm going to really blaze through the open records act. Okay. Because. The, the, the open records act is something that you all need to know about, but it's more something that. We deal with and Adrian deals with. People file open records requests. The clerk gets a million of them. We help her, her or him, uh, respond to the, respond to the request in a timely lawful manner. The, there's critical definitions in the open records act that define the scope of this law. The custodian is usually Adrian. Okay. But what you need to remember, and it's because of this next, next definition of public records. Is that you're this thing right here that all you have. Now, some of the stuff on here is a public record. If it has to do with public business and we get tons, just know that. Be really careful and hesitant about what you put in writing about public business on your phone, in text, on pub, on social media. Because it's all a public record. And somebody with an axe to grind or makes you want to, wants to get something on you. Will file a cora request for every email sent by Renee or the mayor or somebody else about some subject. And then we all get to scramble around and call you up and ask you to produce all your email traffic for us to go through. And determine whether it's releasable. Public records includes all writings made, maintained or kept. By a political subdivision and you guys as elected officials of the political subdivision. The records you keep are records may in, be danger kept by the town, which concern public business. And that, that's critical. It's not every record in your phone. And here's the story to illustrate that. A few years ago. The Arapahoe County clerk was having a torrid affair with his election deputy. And they were sending all these hot emails back and forth about what they'd like to do with each other. I'm sure it was fascinating. And the Denver post thought it would be fascinating too, to write a story about this, wouldn't it? Sell a lot of newspapers. So they file a core request with Arapahoe County. And the Supreme Court ended up sustaining the county's denial of access to the records. Saying the county clerk's job was to administer elections and do all that county clerk stuff. It wasn't the public business of the county clerk to have an affair with his election deputy. That, so all those salacious emails weren't public records because they didn't have to do with public business. So. Pick up some milk on the way home is not a public record. I think the, the amphitheater policy is stupid and overreaching. That's public business. So newspapers like to file for a request too. So you could see your, your text message on the newspaper. No writings, again, includes everything you'd think it would, but it also includes. Digitally stored data, including without limitations, email messages. Okay. So just be aware, be smart, be careful about, be about putting stuff in writing. Cause you could end up in the newspaper. Next slide, please. Records subject to release under Cora. Uh, here's where I start moving. Cora has two lists. Okay. There's the shall deny list and the may deny list. It says, here's all these records you may deny access to custodian if it would interfere with a public interest. But where the action really is, is on the other list, which is the custodian, Adrian. You shall deny access to these kinds of records if there's a request. So you see what we have here. We have a law that requires us to release everything. But then in some cases requires us not to release it. And we've been sued by both sides. You know, we fire, uh, fire somebody, their attorney sues us for releasing information about them. And then we get sued by the newspaper for not releasing information to them about the person we just fired. So we're, it's a very dicey area and we, and we have obligations running both directions. Let's see, uh, next slide, please. The process is, we're always on it. Here's something you should know. If somebody asks for one of your, you know, a bunch of emails from. From, from your phone, we have three minutes, a three minutes. We have three days, three business days to produce those records. The statute says we produce it within a reasonable time, but it also says presumptively that's three days. If, if it's a big, huge request and we can't possibly get it organized in three days. The law permits us to tell the applicant, we get another seven days. But this is not, again, that's not, I'm moving. This isn't something you on council need to worry about. What you need to know is you can get a request. And we are going to have to move really fast. So you will need to move fast to produce your records for us to review. Let's see, uh, we can charge. Oh, I'm going to skip that. Next slide. Uh, we can charge, uh, this is, this has been a good development of the law. We can, we can charge the third bullet there, a researcher and retrieval fee. Which, which if you, you have to have a policy in place, I hopefully have a policy. If we don't, we have to fix that. But the policy says of the first hours, we can charge researcher retrieval fees of, it's now forty six bucks an hour. The first hour is free because you shouldn't be limited to looking at public records. To only people of means. This is to approve that people without means to also look at public records. The, uh, in our policies, we can do things like require a deposit of a portion of the cost. Of, of reviewing these records before we produce the records. This has been incredibly helpful because in the old days, before research and retrieval fees. You guys would deny somebody's sign code variance. Okay. They would get all pissed off and they'd file an open records request for every sign code variance in Dylan since nineteen sixty five. Which would force Adrian to root around. This is all the pre-digital age and come up with all these old dusty records out of the basement. And then the person would never pick up the records. Cause all they were doing was screwing with us, you know, making us go through our paces, you know? Because they knew we had a legal obligation to compile the records within three days. The re, those folks are always, they always have fun with the other person's money. But when they have to pay their own money, that kind of fun doesn't happen nearly as much. So researcher retrieval fees have really served a neck, a good purpose. Okay. Next slide, open meetings. Here we are. As you'll notice in this handout, I have the citations for the laws that we're talking about. So later on, you guys can look at this stuff on your own if you want. Next slide, please. The, the rules of conduct that you adopted in July address, uh, the open, open meetings law obligations. And I want to go through these. With first, it says you'll comply with the open meetings law. Yes. You'll report all potential violations of the open meetings lot of the town attorney and the town manager. Fine. These next two are noteworthy because they go beyond the restrictions required by the law. Council members shall not discuss public business with more than one other council member outside of a publicly noticed meeting. Under the law, you can discuss it with two other council members. Three, I'll get to it in a minute, but three members of a body is an open meeting. If four members are expected to be in attendance or are in attendance, prior notice is required. And that's where you get in trouble because four, you end up talking about some and nobody gave notice. Boom violation. That's why we say never hit reply all on an email involving all of council. Because if you do reply. You've created a gathering, a meeting concerning public business involving more than four of you and no notice was given. See? So instant violation if you do that. So anyway, these, in the rules of procedure that I hope you asked me to develop. These rules will be included, but I would suggest respectfully, you revisit these last two. You might. They're in the interests of transparency, but, and that's a good thing. And you guys can do this if you want. But you have a duty to both be transparent and effective. And people talking about how they're feel about the items before the council is politics. There's no open meetings law obligation to tell everybody before you get on the phone with a council member. Or you talk to a couple of them at the diner about something. That's not. That you may hold yourself to a higher standard, but the legislature hasn't. You know, and, um, uh, so it's up to you. It's a policy choice. I'm just highlighting that it's, there are different approaches here. Uh, next slide, please. Here, like Cora, the definitions in the open meeting law are really important. And they define the scope of this law. And like Cora, the open meetings law is really broad. It, it applies to meeting, first look at the definition of meeting. Any kind of gathering convened to discuss public business. Wow. In person, by telephone, electronically, or other means of communication. So that includes everything in the digital age. Local public body is who's subject to the open meetings law. The, I'm not going to read that whole definition, but here's the important thing. It's not just you guys. It's the tree board. It's the planning and zoning commission. It's all these other bodies that the, the town maintains. Usually city count and town, city councils and town boards have their act together on notice and stuff. The clerk has a procedure. You follow the same procedure all the time. That's how mistakes don't get made. If you have a process and you follow it. Next slide, please. There are three big obligations imposed by the open meetings law. I've referred to them. It'll go through them again here. Openness, prior notice and minutes. Open meetings. This is, all meetings of a quorum or three or more members of a local public body, whichever is fewer. At which any public business is discussed or which any formal action occurs is an open meeting. I never seek issues about this because in order to violate the open meeting mandate. You would have to visit, you'd have to like exclude somebody from a meeting. Like the three of you are sitting in a diner someplace talking about public business. And the local reporter wants to sit down or somebody else wants to join you and you say, no, you can't sit with us. We're discussing public business, which besides being immensely stupid. Would, would also be a clear violation of the law. And so, and it's because it's so sort of intuitively wrong. Nobody, I've never seen a violation of this. Like I said, it's the next one, notice. And look at this requirement, any meetings. One, at which the adoption of any proposed policy position, resolution, rule, regulation, or formally, formal action occurs. Or in which a majority or quorum of the body is in attendance. And then here's the big one. Or is expected to be in attendance. You have to notice up a meeting. If you expect the majority to be there, even if the majority doesn't show up. When I was working at the municipal league, I used to get all these phone calls all the time from people saying, oh, we're going to have this meeting or that meeting. Do we have to provide notice? And I was like, yes, providing notices easy. You don't get in trouble for over noticing. You get in trouble for under noticing. So when in doubt, notice it. In the digital age, it's incredibly simple. To post a notice. The legislature is now provided that we can do it on our websites. You know, it could not be simpler. A next slide, please. The legislature did not unhelpfully, they say, well, you have to provide full and timely notice. But then they didn't say what that is. So everybody screws around trying to figure out what full and timely notice is. The legislature did provide an example of notice by posting. And since, and they have more recently, as I indicate here, they've authorized posting on the website. It used to be, you had to post. Uh, on a bulletin board at city hall or designate various kinds of physical posting locations. Uh, minutes, that's the next item here. Minutes are not required in a work session, but I just had this week. Uh, an example of where you need to think about minutes with a work session. In one of our cities, we had a work session where they wanted to go into executive session from the work session. Yeah, you can do that because you can go session from any regular or special meeting and the work session was a special meeting. But you have to take a vote and you have to make these announcements before you go into executive session. I bet you have a script that you follow and everybody follows a script because. Sterling got sued a few years ago and the tape recording they made of their executive session ended up being a public record. Because they hadn't followed the process going in. Boy, did the newspaper get a great story out of that. Cause you know, people talk in executive session in a way they don't speak in public. So, uh, anyway, the, the takeaway is if, if you're going to do, somebody better be taking minutes. If you decide you're going to go into executive session. Unfortunately, the, in this case, the body was doing that. Somebody was taking minutes. Then you approve them at your next meeting. You're, you're fine. Secret ballots, don't use them. Legislature said you can't do that. It's really tough in small towns when you're filling vacancies in particular, because you're friends with everybody and you're only get to vote for one of them. And that's exactly why this law exists. It's to, because the legislature heard about people doing that. Here's an important exception. I keep talking about running it, you know, talking at the coffee shop, classic small town gathering place. If you're, if two of you are down there and you're just hanging out and a couple more people join you. Well, that's a chance meeting or social gathering. You didn't all agree to meet at the coffee shop to talk about public business. Uh, and so do not apply to chance meetings or social gatherings at which the discussion of public business is not the central purpose. Now, like most things in the law, there's the law and then there's stupid. You know, you, there's ways to, I always tell people, use this law as protection against somebody who's trying to get you with a complaint. Don't view this as a license to get queued. I've had cities say, can I, can I have a garden in my, a barbecue in my backyard? And have a whole council over and we'll just figure this out. No, no, don't do that. Uh, it has, you have to play it straight with the stuff. And you know, I always say, use the, how would it look on the front page of the newspaper test as well as, is it? Did I respond to your question?
Yeah.
Want to make sure.
Yeah. But let me, if you can just expand it.
Sure.
So you said that three of us sitting in, in, in a lunch, lunch, discussing public business. I thought that that was not appropriate.
You can decide if it's appropriate. It is legal. Under the open meetings law, that is not a violation. If somebody wants to join you, it has to be open. Now people say, how do I know they're having an open meeting if they haven't noticed it? Well. Who knows? But I'm just telling you what the law says. If there's four that are even expected to be in attendance, you have to get prior notice though. But three people, you know, you can decide, as I said earlier, with respect to your rules of conduct. You can have tighter rules locally than the open meetings law. Boulder does not permit executive sessions example at, on anything. No. So you, if you guys are driving the bus, but, uh. The law is that the rule of three and the rule of four, rule of three, it's open. the law is that the rule of three and the rule of four, the rule of three, it's open. The rule of four, it's noted, prior notice. That's, but appropriateness and legality are two different things, right? And appropriateness reflects your philosophy, what you think the community expects in the way of transparency in this case. Again, when we do the rules, you can revisit that and you can leave them as they are or make changes. As you wish. Where are we? Executive sessions. Okay. Of the easily the hardest thing I deal with in, in the connection with the open meetings law. Why? Because the general philosophy behind the open meetings law is we're doing the public's business. The public has a right to come and watch us do it. They get to know when we're going to be doing the public's business. And they get to be heard in connection with the public business that we're doing. Executive sessions are in some, at first glance, they're contrary to that policy because it's a legal sanction for a secret meeting. But the, the policy, the critical thing to remember about executive sessions is the policy is that in certain situations, the public's interest is better served by a confidential discussion than an open meeting. Okay. And then when you look at the reasons for which executive sessions are allowed, and we'll do that in a minute. You'll see that, and all the, here's an example. One of them is to consider real estate acquisition and purchase. Well, you're acting on behalf of the taxpayers, trying to get a good deal on a piece of property. And you've got the seller's lawyer sitting in the audience. Guess what happens? The price, you, you're talking about what your bottom line is, you know, what kind of deal, what sort of concessions you want by the seller. It's absurd to think about talking about that. How are you serving the public's interest by having the other side of the transaction listening to you? You're not. The public's interest is better served by you discussing that in private. And one of the other things you can do in an executive session is instruct negotiators on, you know, go buy this property. Don't offer more than a half a million. If, if they want more than that, here's what we want you to give us and you know, blah, 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 blah. And these all make a lot of sense when you think of them in terms of serving the public. The, the public will assume that you're going into executive session to cover your rears politically in this cynical age that we live in, but that's not what executive sessions are for. And the critical thing about executive sessions is they're for deliberation, not deciding. You're supposed to exchange ideas. You, city councils have gotten in trouble for doing, people doing stuff like in, in light of the rule that you're not supposed to make decisions or take formal actions and stuff. Let's, let's see a, see a show of hands. Who thinks we should fire the city manager? Don't do that. Oh yeah. Don't do that in an executive session. Very funny. Guys on the ball. Anyway, you, you can't do that in exec, don't do a show of hands, go around the table and say, you know, okay, hire the city attorney. Let's use that as an example. Let's go around the table and say, how are they doing? Well, they don't get to act to be quick enough or that can't rely on their advice or whatever. And all of you can count, all of you can count how people are feeling. You don't need to say, let's see a straw poll and all that sort of stuff. So be careful of that. You also have, you have the purposes to deliberate and the process. Both of those are reflected in your charter. There were charter provisions here in Dylan on those. It's also in state law, though. The executives, now we have to tape record all executive session record. Okay. The, the tape is not a public record. I helped write that crazy law and it says the tape is there if, if there are grounds sufficient to support a reasonable belief in a person that doesn't have an axe to grind with the city, that looks like the body and executive section either got off topic or made a decision that they're not supposed to make, then you can request a judge to do what's called an in camera review, where the judge will listen to the tape and the judge will see if you did the bad thing. And if you did do the bad thing, then the judge will release the portion of the tape where you got substantially off topic, or you made a decision, you know, or made a, took some sort of formal action. I haven't seen a lot of these happen because it's real hard to show that a body got off topic in an executive session if you weren't in there. So just know that. Next slide, please. Okay. Here's the basis for executive session here in Dylan. These are similar to state law, but different. The, the first one is instructing negotiators. Second one is acquisition and disposal of property. The third one says matters of attorney client privilege. The state law says getting advice from your attorney on specific legal questions. So this one's broader. This one doesn't confine you to asking me questions. The next one's federal law and non-superseded state law that matters critical to the personal safety of members of the council. That also is not covered in state law in those terms. What state law says is that you can, you can go into executive session to discuss specialized details of security arrangements. And security, or this was after nine 11, right? That security arrangements can keep protecting you guys. It can be protecting the water treatment plant, the airport, all different kinds of municipal property and assets. So the, the language is different, but the policy objectives are the same. Personnel matters. The state law on executive sessions for personnel matters is more detailed than this. Says you can go into an executive session to discuss a personnel matter, but if you, it, you can't talk about personnel policies. You have to talk about a particular person and you have to notify that employee before you go into it, an executive session and that employee can say, no, I don't want you to talk about me in executive session. I insist that you do it in open meeting. And the policy behind that is that if you, the, if the policy actually makes good sense, if you're trying to railroad somebody, railroading doesn't go as well in the sunlight, you know, and it's to keep somebody from getting railroaded in an executive session. So that's why that, you guys don't have that in your rules. And I should tell you that the, many cities have their own open meetings procedures like this, but the courts have not yet been clear on whether home rule cities get to do their own thing.
You know, we use that though. We always
Use the state law.
Personnel matters. It's personnel matters and this person has not asked that it be discussed in an
Beautiful. Well, and item seven is really awesome. Consider additional matters which by state statute or by court decision can be excluded. See, so that's a good catchall that you guys have at the end, notwithstanding the differences. Okay. I'm going to keep rolling here. Be in a submission. Ethics and conflicts of interest. You've got good stuff in your charter already on a bunch of this. Good deal. Way to go. First, the revolving door provision. This one makes sense. You can't create a job in the city bureaucracy and then retire from council and take the job. Do you really need the law to tell you that? If you don't have a moral compass that tells you about that, you, you know, you got deeper problems. Uh, disclosure and abstention rule. This is in your charter. It's also in state law. It's in the state code of ethics. No member shall vote on any question concerning the member's own conduct. Well, duh. Then C, no member shall vote on any question in which the member has a conflict of interest as shall be defined by this charter. The charter doesn't say much or by ordinance. I don't think you have any ordinances on it either. Other than the common public, on such question, the member shall one disclose the nature of the conflict of interest to the council. Not, you know, not in writing to the manager, to the attorney, to the rest of the council. And then don't vote. And then state law, next slide, please. State law includes that you won't try and influence the other members of the panel on how they vote. And different city councils have different practices with respect to that last requirement. Some say if you're conflicted, you need to leave the room because your mere presence in the room will tend to influence how their other members of the panel vote. You're such an intimidating presence. Or, and then others don't. If you just stay in your seat and shut up, don't try and influence anybody. That's cool. So it's again, it's a kind of a local choice. I'm, as an attorney, I'm, I'm more disposed to just go ahead and stay in the sea. You don't have to get up and go through or disrupt everything by leaving the meeting. What is a conflict of interest? Well, kind of like full and timely notice. Legislature didn't tell us. Legislature says, well, if you've got a personal or private interest in the matter, Ben. Well, they don't define what that is. So a lot of activity in county, city councils that I've been involved with charter amendments is defining what a conflict of interest is or in the, in your code. And you'll see it in the public officials code of ethics or in the rules of procedure too. The very least conflicts of interest are understood to, to occur when you have a fairly direct pecuniary benefit that, or detriment that occurs to you as a result of the official action. The more attenuated the benefit or detriment becomes, the less likely is a conflict. And there is no conflict because let's say we're a, uh, let's see, what would be an example? We're, we're passing a, we're passing a lighting and curb and gutter improvement plan for the downtown business district. And somebody in the down, a couple of members of the council have shops in the downtown business district. Are they prohibited from voting? No. Because they might well have been elected because they're main street business people. And that, so they're, they're in a similar position to a lot of other people who are their constituents. It isn't a particularized benefit or detriment. And so these, I'm not, these conflict interest situations have to be worked out on a case by case basis. But it's an often misunderstood problem. The overall policy purpose of the conflict of interest restrictions are that the public is assured that the body is working for the public's interests and not serving any private interests. That's pretty obvious.
Next slide.
Okay. Besides the conflict of interest and abstention and that kind of stuff, there are also gift bands that you're subject to under amendment forty one, member passed a few years ago in two thousand and six. Uh, here's the deal with this thing. I'll just summarize this. If somebody comes up and gives you a gift that costs sixty bucks or more for just because they, you're so awesome, because you're on the town board in Dylan, be suspicious. You're not allowed to take more than fifty nine dollar in gifts from any particular donor in any particular year. Just because you're an awesome person on the Dylan down board. If you give consideration for this, if you do something in exchange for what you're receiving, that isn't covered by this restriction, but just, you know, hey, we love you guys on the Dylan town board. Here's an avalanche ticket. And watch out. Talk to us if that happens. We'll keep you clear of trouble. Again, the gift ban in the constitution has a bunch of exceptions, but you guys have something in your code of conduct. Rule, section F five, no member shall accept gifts from members of the public. Period. So that's your rule. And what, this will be in your rules of conduct. I'll just say things like that can get complicated. Like, does this include your kids, your spouse? What if they play, what, what if they play on a softball team sponsored by a local car dealership? And the car dealership buys them all jackets for the softball team? Is that a violation of this gift ban? That's the kind of junk we had to go through when amendment forty one first passed. Cause we didn't know about the consideration exceptions. So you have a rule with no exceptions. So and if it's fine, it's fine. Uh, but you might have to, that's when somebody might run afoul of sometime. A next slide, please.
Can I bring up one, ask one question? So some of us are about to go to the COO breakfast and they have a gift bag for everybody. And if you look at all the loot in there, you know, there's a lift ticket that's worth over a hundred bucks.
Is it, is it a like door prize?
Yeah, everybody gets
Random, then you're cool because you're not getting that because you're on the Dylan council. You got it in a random drawing. Well, I remember we lost our minds at CML one year because the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities gave away a television way over the amount, you know? And, but we were okay because the television was given away on a basis like that. It wasn't given to anybody because of their public position. They received it in a random drawing.
Everybody gets
Where everybody gets to do it. Everybody, you know, you're just the lucky guy that drew the right ticket and happened to be on the Dylan council. Okay. Now, uh, the Dylan charter, now I've been talking about the code of conduct. The charter says the town shall be governed by the standards of conduct, but what's written, knowing it's the public officials code of ethics. And then here's a bunch of stuff in the code of ethics that now these here, this, these things, I virtually never see violations of these. And the reason for this is that if you have a basic moral compass, you don't get in trouble with these rules and you have rules kind of like this in your code of conduct. There are the parameters. It's like, look at the third one. There's a rule against having a financial or business relationship with a person who you officially inspect or supervise in the course of your official duties. Really? Do you need a law to tell you that? I mean, come on. You can't have a personal financial interest in a government contract. Really? You know, uh, you can't do an official act benefiting your one's business or client. Well, that one, that's one's particular business and client. Remember my example earlier? You know, if, if you're a business on Main Street, you're similar situated to other businesses. You're elected to council because you're in that trade or business. That's okay. You know? It's not a conflict. You're a real estate agent. You're a real estate agent. You, you, one could say, oh, anything that, anything that generates more houses for sale and Dylan creates a conflict for Renee. No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Uh, and similar, so it's all kinds of other businesses. Now, if the, like I said earlier, if the relationship was not so attenuated and the closer it gets, the closer the situation gets, but just on it, there's my example. Okay. So that's it for that. Uh, next slide, please. Quasi judicial matters, the next party communications. I've referred to some of this. Go to the next slide. Yes. Legislative matters, passing ordinances are, these ordinances have broad applicability. They establish a new policy of the city. They make law. Quasi judicial matters like land use applications and liquor licensing and that kind of stuff. You don't make new policy. You take an existing policy and you apply it to a particular individual or their property. And that brings it under the due process clause of the U S constitution, where we got to worry about ex parte communications and all of that sort of stuff. Next slide, please. And the reason for this is because under the due process clause, when you guys are exercising your, it has a whole training she does on this, by the way, if you guys ever want more training on quasi judicial. But the, the due process clause says every one of you have to be impartial when deciding land use decisions and these other kinds of things. And the way you, the way impartiality gets screwed up is ex parte communications where what you get information that the other members of the panel don't hear. You talk to somebody that nobody else talks to. You go out and take a site visit that others haven't taken. So you have a different view of the project than everybody else. The whole thing about ex parte is outside of the record. You, you guys have to make your decision strictly on what's in the record and don't go out and create new stuff. I had a council member, we were citing a tower in one city. And I had a council member go do all this research about radio frequency emissions from those, you know, cell phone towers of, of a legitimate concern, but you don't go out and do your own research. I had to tell that guy, you didn't get to vote on anything. He was very unhappy with me, but it was the rules. The other way is prejudgment and bias. And this is where I was talking about social media here earlier, you know, be very, very, very careful now about posting on social media. If you say this project stinks before it's considered by the body, then your reward is you don't get to vote. Cause you prejudged the project. You're not impartial. The developer could come in and blow up the rest of the council's approval of the project based on your bias and failure to abstain. So, uh, just, oh, and a particularly dangerous thing to do, long as I'm on a rant, uh, is not attacking the project, but attacking the developer. Because if the developer has multiple projects and you said, I think this developer is a slug. Well, then anytime slugs a project, so you don't get to vote. Cause you've already said what you think. You've prejudged everything that developer is doing. So.
So, so you can't attack developers, right?
You shouldn't attack developers.
You shouldn't at all, right?
You just shouldn't do it. You have, when you're on council, you don't give up your rights to political speech. But you have other parts of the conflict constitution. You have a duty to comply with for the benefit of all of your constituents. So one of the things that council members have to do on very controversial quasi judicial matters is bite their tongue. It's really hard to do. That's why council members don't like lawyers telling them about quasi judicial stuff. Cause you say, hey, I got elected to list to my constituents. I got elected. So when they're all pissed off, they can come and tell me they don't like this development. And yes, you did get elected to do that, but you use that device I told you earlier. Please, I want to be able to vote on this. And if I talk to you, I may disqualify myself. Put it in writing and send it to all of us or show up at the hearing and testify in front of all you. You can do it that way too. But just don't do the ex party communication. And finally, it's like our old friend conflict of interest. You know, if you have a fairly close relationship with the applicant in a choir, or you know, that somebody's getting a liquor license renewal and you're an employee at the bar. In a choir, or, or you know, there's somebody's getting a liquor license renewal and you're an employee at the bar. Better not vote. Better not vote. So that's all I need to say about that. Okay, now I'm gonna really haul because I gotta be done in two minutes. Municipal revenue sources in Tabor, just read through this, okay campers? Sales taxes are your main revenue stream. As Main Street goes, so goes our revenue. We're highly dependent on the sales tax in Colorado. If any politician tells you they're not going to raise taxes or criticizes their opponent as intending to raise taxes, they're full of it. Because here in Colorado, only the voters raise taxes. Politicians do not increase taxes or, you know, they just can't. Property taxes getting a lot less reliable now the legislature started screwing around. Miscellaneous taxes, lately we've seen a lot of specific occupation taxes on short term rentals in some cities. Fees are not such, all these taxes and stuff, you have to have an election under Tabor to raise them or continuum and so forth. Fees you do not. Fees have to be related to the cost of the program you're paying for. Taxes do not, taxes are general revenue raising devices. But fees do not have to go to a vote of the people. Earlier versions of Tabor, Doug Bruce would have had us having to go to election to raise golf course green fees, can you imagine? Geez, fortunately, that version of Tabor didn't get passed. I've given like two hour seminars on Tabor, next slide. Oh, there we go, you guys are on it. I'm not going to go through all of this. Tabor generally requires election. Any kind of new taxes, it requires you to refund excess, excess revenue under a formula that exists in Tabor. Most cities, probably Dillon, have passed what's called a debruising measure, which allows you to keep and spend revenue in excess of Tabor's formula that would otherwise require a refund. Next slide. Little about elections. They're really a little about elections with one minute. There, you got regular elections and special elections. You guys know when your regular elections are and special elections are all the other ones. The last slide, I talked to you about, I sent you a memo on this recently. In the Fair Campaign Practices Act, once something is referred to the ballot, it's before the voters. Then the policy is, everybody has to pay taxes. And you shouldn't, the government shouldn't be able to use your tax money to proselytize the government's particular position back to the voters. So the, the, the Fair Campaign Practices Act says, once something goes to the ballot, no public money can be spent on advocacy. And that law is widely supported by the public. Okay, so this is, and, and as I say here, this is a, this is their big favorite with anti-government types. They love to file complaints accusing the government of misspending public money in elections. Because you get a big headline in the newspaper. And then when the thing gets dismissed a month and a half later after the election, nobody pays any attention. So it's a well-used political device that you can avoid having happen to you by just being, being smart. That's it. I can, I'd be happy to do more on other subject areas. All of these areas I just talked about, I've done multiple, you know, I've done an hour and a half on Cora, an hour and a half on the two hours on court. This is just a sample of the torture I can deliver. But thank you for your attention very much. And if you were late, but I'm happy to answer any questions or if you want to follow up with me later.
So, just so that you think the homework assigned here was to review this?
What I would appreciate, if I could get a, thank you mayor for bringing that up. What I would appreciate, take a look at that. What I would appreciate is a sort of consensus or no objection, direction from you all. That I draft up a straw man for you all to consider in a work session.
For rules of
For rules of procedure incorporating
I'm in favor of that.
Everybody cool with that.
As possible.
And then you don't have to adopt it and you can change it any way you want, it just give you something to get started with. And it'll bring some order here.
But when we adopt it, then we follow it.
Then you follow it.
And if you don't follow it, then what happens?
Well, there are, there are sanction procedures in there.
And we can put those
And those are going to be in, you'll see them at the very end, it's like you can do a resolution. Censuring whoever the bad person is. Where you just say, bad, 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 bad. Don't do it anymore. I mean, it's, that's the, always the criticism of rules of procedures. It's basically your own rules and you have to police yourselves. Some places you can make it official misconduct under the charter. So that after two of those, you can do it, you could throw them off the council. But that's getting pretty hardcore. That is not the common practice. Some cities make mit, violation of the charter a misdemeanor. Can you imagine? It really makes people go after their enemies to prove that they violated the criminal law. It's really unproductive.
And you'll always alert us when, when we're in quasi judicial mode.
Absolutely. The, the best, uh, I don't know what we do here yet, but on all the agendas for our other cities. The item will have an L or a QJ after it. Which signals to the presiding officer to use the legislative script or the quasi judicial script for that particular item. But yeah, it's the lawyer's job to speak up too. Like one of our, one of our presiding officers always forgets to ask for public comment. So we're always reminding the mayor to do that in this city. So it's just, we're all, it's all a team. Everybody's looking to make sure the rules get followed and, and, uh, but yeah, my, our jobs to pipe up. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Since we are running a little overtime, staff can opt in or opt out to provide your one single highlight that you'd like to share with the council tonight. Marina director, Greg.
Uh, first of all, I'm killing it on that unicycle, man, that thing is
It's a unimotorcycle.
It's really cool. Saturday, Mother Nature tried to move the marina pretty much up here to Town Hall. Um, and I just want to say a thank you to everyone. Your support of the team that I have, the infrastructure that we have, the tools that we have. We got through what could have been a really catastrophic storm. Clean. So that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Events and Recreation Director, Jesse, did you have one highlight you want to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to say also thank you, it was an incredible season, Sunday was our final event of the summer. Forty-four concerts, twenty rec events, fourteen farmers markets, all done in three really quick months, so thank you all for your support and for coming to see us down at the AMP.
So great, thank you, Jesse. I don't see Dan here. And then, uh, Senior Town Planner, Ned, did you want to give us a highlight?
There, um, yeah, I wanted to let you know that we're going to be starting the grading and rock placement for the native species garden in Town Park, gonna start working on that in several weeks. Public Works is going to help us with that, so I wanted to give you all the heads up, that's what the activity will be there. Um, I also want to let you know real quick about a project that, um, I've been kicking off with a bunch of community members. We've got about forty-two of us now on our working committee. Um, and it's for a wildfire ready watersheds program. So have community members from all different walks, um, and we're gathering together and we're trying to put in for a grant. Um, and the match will be twenty-five percent. And right now, um, what we're looking at, trying to get the town's contribution, uh, to be, would be thirty thousand dollars. So more on that coming, um, but it's very exciting work that will be very impactful for not only our drinking watershed. But Summit County in general, so any questions for me?
Thank you, Ned.
Great, thank you.
Um, in the interest of giving everyone a few minutes to recover and get ready for the meeting. What do you guys think about moving committee reports to item nine on the regular meeting and doing council member comments with committee reports on the regular meeting? Council meeting agenda review. Um, and then adjournment, so. Take ten and we'll be back here at seven to start the regular meeting.